So, good evening, everyone. We get started on our February 6th Town Council meeting. We have with—sorry, Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
He works.
Oh, sorry. Councilman Krokoviac? I'm sorry. Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
I did get my booth, but thank you.
Yeah.
Can't say we don't have fun.
Do you have to read this? Do you have to read them?
No, I don't have to.
Okay, good. Okay, so, on our conference agenda this evening, we have the Human Relations Commission with us this evening. A lot of members, welcome. Tammy Williams, chairperson, will give us a review of your annual report.
Good afternoon. My name is Tammy Williams, serving as Chairwoman of the West Orange Human Relations Commission, and I live at 16 Hillside Avenue in West Orange. The Human Relations Commission was established by ordinance in 1992, and is charged to develop and implement programs and initiatives that encourage a positive and constructive dialogue within the township about diversity-related issues. The Commission encourages the inclusion of all people and is involved in community-building tasks and strategies that enhance and sustain respect among different groups. Through the years, the HRC has played an integral role in fostering diversity within our community, and this annual report captures the activities of the Human Relations Commission in 2017. The HRC meets on the 4th Monday, monthly, at 7:00 PM in Town Hall Meeting Room 109. Meetings are open to the public. The annual budget is $5,100. The HRC hosted and/or participated in over 14 events in 2017, and utilized the majority of those funds with an ending balance of $508.17. While the budget was underutilized, there were expenditures that were not invoiced during this period. Therefore, we need our money. The HRC monthly expenses include an incoming voicemail answering line that averages a cost of $50 monthly. We are seeking solutions to minimize this monthly expense. The Township Council approved reducing the number of active commissioners in February 2017 from 21 members to 13 members. There were numerous vacancies on the Commission. The mayoral appointments were reduced from six to three commissioners, and each councilman reduced appointments from three to two commissioners. This simple adjustment in appointments has increased participation of appointed commissioners from less than 40% to an increase of 80% participation in 2017. Two commissioners resigned from the Commission in 2017, Tim Carter due to relocation in June 2017, and Stephanie Brown in December 2017 due to increased employment obligations. There are currently three vacancies on the Commission. Councilman Guarino has two, and Councilman Cirillo has one open appointment. The following events were hosted or sponsored by the Human Relations Commission last year. Our annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Township Celebration is by ordinance our primary charge to promote inclusion. In 2017, our keynote speaker was Mark Mariel, the President and CEO of the National Urban League. Over 250 persons attended the event, which was held on January 16th at the Life Christian Church located at 747 Northfield Avenue from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Mariel's message focused on how Dr. King's messages and philosophies are more relevant now than ever. Ashley Bowie McFarlane provided reflections on developing a serving heart. Our MLK Spirit Award honorees included Marley Diaz, Jane Gartner, Henry Hamilton, Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez, and Mona Scott Young. Each awardee was presented with a plaque honoring their contributions to the community. Artistic performances included a Dr. King excerpt from Sincere Silveira, a dance interpretation of Glory by U-PAC dancers, and a guitar interlude by Andrew Scheid. The closing prayer and MLK litany were provided by Minister Carol Patterson. The HRC also hosted a community town council meeting in February of 2017. Township officials included a panel of Mayor Parisi, Business Administrator Jack Sayers, Police Chief James Abbott, and other community officials participated in a new conversation series to discuss diversity, tolerance, and implicit bias within our community. Residents were able to discuss concerns and understand the direction of the administration on these issues. Over 100 residents filled Town Hall chambers for this open discussion. The HRC partnered with the West Orange African Heritage Organization and the West Orange Public Library for several events in February and March, which included a Black History Month program, a program on immigration rights, a Women's History Month presentation, and also a New Jersey law against discrimination, which was hosted and led by Philip Freeman from the Assistant Director's Office of the Attorney General for the State of New Jersey. Additionally, the HRC participated in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and also the West Orange Street Fair, which was held annually in June, the first Saturday of each June. The West Orange HRC participated in the Pride March and LGBTQ flag-raising held in June, and hosted its own International Cultural Food Festival at Aspat. Over 14 cultural food vendors featuring foods from around the globe participated at this Aspat location, which provided a unique opportunity to not only bring international vendors of food and the community together, but also hosted a carnival which included kiddie rides and games. This event was well-attended with over 500 guests from neighboring communities and beyond. Guests indicated traveling as far as Raway and New York City to attend this event. The HRC also hosted chair yoga for our seniors in conjunction with the West Orange High School mentors in September of 2017, and a teen Town Hall Talk Forum about diversity and diversity-related issues, race, and privacy in October of 2017. The diversity video created by the Township and the Public Relations Commission also featured members from our community discussing issues on diversity, and mirrored the initiative from the high school, and was released during Thanksgiving week. One of our most proud ventures for 2018 was creating a community calendar. Ads were sold from various businesses to support the cost of producing 1,000 calendars for our community, and those calendars have been distributed via the businesses that participated by purchasing ads. Calendars can be received or picked up from Town Hall, the West Orange Public Library, the Recreation Department, the Rent a House, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Breakfast also was a point of distribution for the calendar, and calendars are still available at Town Hall. The HRC has increased posting on its Facebook page as a medium to foster tolerance and acceptance within the community. Videos received the most views, and the Commission agreed that its most effective mechanism to address culture diversity is by the production of videos. Videos allows each individual to address diversity issues and discover differing perspectives in your private time and space at home. The HRC has posted videos of the teen talk and the 2018 MLK Junior Celebration, which featured the Discovery Twins. The MLK video has been viewed over 400,000 times and favorably highlights West Orange. We will continue to produce videos and Facebook Live events where interaction can be maximized. The HRC seeks to continue partnering with community groups and organizations to maximize and bridge the path to diversity, acceptance, cooperation, and respect among West Orange residents. The HRC would like to thank the mayor, the Town Council, all departments, employees, volunteer citizens, and especially the appointed commissioners who tirelessly support diversity and the fostering of equality in our community and beyond. At this time, I would just like to take a moment to introduce each of our commissioners who are present here with us today, and also acknowledge the hard work of those who were unable to join us this evening, and I'm going to ask them to please stand and join me at the podium so that they can also be recognized. This is a group effort, and all of these accomplishments could not have been achieved without their assistance. We have with us today Patricia West, if you'll please stand, Stephen Hobson, Susan Pennell. We also have Alexandra Durande—Durance, and Asmairet Deborah Michael stepped out with her son. Please give them all a round of applause for the hard work that they do. This is a unified effort to create diversity in the township of West Orange, and as you can see, our Commission is extremely diverse in race and in character, and we all bring to heart the passion and love for making sure that West Orange creates a diverse community that is welcoming to all of our citizens. Thank you for your time, for the opportunity to present all that we have done in 2017 to each of you, and we thank you, and we will continue to create a better and brighter West Orange. Thank you. Before I end, I would just like to add that our next and upcoming event will be on February 22nd. That will be a Q&amp;A and book signing for our own Marley Diaz. She has a new book that was released January 31st, Marley Diaz Gets It Done, and You Can Too. It will be at her middle school, Roosevelt Middle School, which is located at 36 Gilbert Place, and is open to the public, and her books will be available for sale for $15. Thank you. And admission is free, but we want—you—
Admission is free.
And the calendars are free, yes. I'm being told the calendars are free.
Any comments or questions?
Can I make a comment, please, Madam President? Tammy, thank you very much, and thank you to the HRC Board. I just want to—I have to—I have to make one correction, Tammy. I only have one opening, because Mr. Hobson is my—
Oh. I stand corrected.
So, welcome.
Thank you, Tammy.
I just want to say how comprehensive this is, and this is just a wrap of 2017, and you're already off to a start in 2018 with the calendar and the Martin Luther King Celebration. The ceremony was beautiful, so what can I say? It's only February 6th, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, we should, though, if anyone does want to volunteer to serve on this Commission, they can either do it through the website or—
To the test.
Through the mayor's office, right?
Yeah.
Mid-name. Contact the mayor's office, 973-325-4100, to leave information there, show interest.
There's two points.
We have to redo that picture. Can we redo that picture now that—
We've got to get Asmairet in there.
Alan?
Everyone works so hard.
Yeah.
It's definitely a team effort.
You look good in all those pictures in the paper, I must say. Of course.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Nice job.
Thank you, Tammy.
There's two folders. There's all stuff all over the place.
That's it. How's that hockey going? Good?
You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. All right, so then we'll move right along. Next on our agenda is Susan Anderson, our Public Information Officer, to give us an update.
I actually need my glasses to distance. I can't actually see with them on. Good evening, Council President, Councilmembers, and residents. I'm honored to have served as Communication Director for the Township these past three We've continued to expand on communications programs in the promotion of the Township while also developing new initiatives to highlight the West Orange community. As in previous years, the responsibilities of the Office of Public Information expanded throughout 2016 and 2017. The Office's goals of promoting the Township as a great place to live, increasing its media footprint, and keeping residents informed was accomplished, and several additional unplanned projects were also completed. One of the Township's largest projects was pitching and promotion of the 2017 Vietnam Traveling Wall. The result was a well-organized event that garnered major media coverage, including CBS News, the Star Ledger, Fox News, Fios, News 12, and others. Other programs that drew great publicity last year was the Police Department's Operation Hope, which was featured on both local media as well as the Star Ledger and News 12. Meanwhile, the Police Department's latest initiative, Take Me Home, made local media and garnered an interview with the chief on News 12. I continue involvement in the Office of Emergency Management. The Township's new communications emergency management plan was compiled and edited by myself, which also acts as a statewide model as it was the first submitted in New Jersey under the new format. The new plan includes social media and canned videos on 12 catastrophic events as identified by FEMA, including snowstorms, hurricanes, and terror attacks. I wrote the scripts for each of these events, where the instructions for the public are narrated by the mayor and a member of the Police Department. I also updated and expanded OEM's media list to grow its public outreach. Meanwhile, a recent release, Three Things to Know About the New Fire Trip, was a hit with the local press, including the tap catch, and he was quite happy that a local Italian paper picked it up and called him to interview him. That said, my office continues to provide emergency support in reporting things like fires, water main breaks, road closings, and other township emergencies. Now, not all the content created by me goes to major media, and much of it is prepared for township mediums, which are Facebook and the website. Some of our notable 2017 campaigns include the Drive Sober Get Pulled Over campaign, Don't Be an Easy Target, Lock Your Car Doors, Pick Up After Your Dog, the Free Smoke Alarm Program, Cold Weather Tips, the annual Realtor Open House, which I do with the Public Relations Commission. Last year, we had 85 Realtors, and the year before, 100, and that's a very important event for our town because it gets the word out about all the things that we have to offer if you want to live here in West Orange. And of course, any other content that's curated from the various departments that we post on a daily basis, including the library. This year, the Office of Public Information has taken over the management of the police blotter to ensure quality control in reporting incidents factually and to gauge communications needs. Meanwhile, content created from fire and police recognition ceremonies is shared on social media and is a continued success, with the social media manager noting in his last presentation that it is among the most popular on our township's social mediums. My office will continue to provide support to township officials, meeting with them twice monthly and as needed, and support all departments. We will continue to serve the community by fielding questions, compliments, and concerns from residents, and provide information daily through internal and external media, their phone calls, in-person visits, et cetera. And we will also continue to support the public and public organizations such as the Downtown, and the Elks, and anyone else who has a community event that they want to get out to the public. It will also continue to promote the Township and serve as liaison to the PR Commission whose kindness campaign—and I don't know when Josie's coming in here to state that—was recently rolled into a "We Are the Answer" video, the same video that you spoke of that Perry produced, and if you haven't seen it, it's on Facebook. It's a really nice piece of work. She has cards and other materials coming soon. I'd like to thank Perry, the social media consultant, for his collaboration and for the graphics that he creates to go along with my content. And I'd also like to thank Shari, who volunteers to post a lot of the content I create, and she's also a tremendous asset to the department. And I want to remind everyone that subscriptions to our email blast and our Swift 911 continues to grow, and we encourage residents to sign up for our email blast, for the Swift 911 system, to our social media, @westorange.info, to keep up to date on the various things that are happening in town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you. What kind of numbers are we looking at with the email blast and the Swift 911?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. I can get them to you, but they continue to grow.
Okay. It's pretty—the couple thousand, right?
Yeah, we're in the thousands. I think probably around 2,000 on the email blast. They continue to grow. I can tell you, I've seen the mediums go up in the past two years in terms of subscribers.
And that's a great venue, because that goes out—if I believe—weekly, right?
Yeah. It's a weekly curation of township events that are submitted to us and edited and placed in that blast for distribution.
But you have to go on and log on yourself?
You have to log on. You have to sign up.
Go to our website.
Yeah. Go to the website, left-hand corner, sign up.
Tons of information.
Yes.
Now, there's lots of graphics also included in that newsletter that goes out, so that makes it that much more appealing.
Yeah, well, that was a new format that I implemented last year, and I asked Perry to create graphics for each event, because I just thought—it, you know, was total print, and graphics drive social media, and they cause people to read, and I thought, you know, text-heavy, perhaps it wasn't grabbing attention like the new format.
Everybody loves pictures.
Yeah.
Good. Comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Redevelopment update? Any comments?
Yeah, there's a couple of things that—if you're driving by, you can see on the outside, but even on the inside, the internal renovations inside is going very, very well. They put the new sidewalks wall in. They have—the new lighting is basically completed on the outside. I don't know if you've driven by there. They have the lights out there. Storefronts are basically completed. The facade is pretty—pretty much done, and I don't know if you've noticed, but in the battery factory, they've redone all the windows.
Yeah.
So, they are—they're moving along very, very well. So, hopefully, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that in the spring, they will be ready to do what they're saying they're going to do.
Mr. Sayers or Mr. Gross? Any spreadsheet or any allocations for the money dispersed to the developer?
We have not dispersed any money to them yet.
Okay. Any anticipations?
Yes, and I was actually—I might as well just now. One of the questions that Councilman Krokoviac brought up is with regard to the Phase 2 agreements. They're still reviewing. We actually—I found out today yesterday that we sent the financial agreements out to them to review. We're reviewing those agreements, and once they sign off on those agreements, then we're going to have to start making our payments, including the—their tax appeals. So, until we get those documents back, nothing's going to be paid out, but we are anticipating getting those documents probably within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
There's two documents, one's the redevelopment agreement, one's the financial agreement.
Any idea when those agreements will be back to you? When they'll be back?
They have them now. They're reviewing them. I talked to our attorneys actually this afternoon, and they said that they were—they had talked to their attorney, and that they are in the process of reviewing the financial agreements now.
You mentioned something about a tax appeal, Mr. Sayers?
They had—
Yeah.
They said we settled the tax appeal with them.
Right. Okay, I just want to make sure to settle the tax. Okay, yeah.
So, we haven't paid—what I'm saying is, we haven't paid out any of that money yet.
Right.
Whether it was the tax appeal money or the other money that was required.
Okay, so I heard correct. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Sayers.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Just wanted to follow—I'm sorry, just wanted to follow up. You were mentioning that the—that the redevelopers checking or reviewing the redevelopment agreement and the financial agreement. Correct. So, the council has already voted and approved those two documents, so are you saying that there are changes to that? That there—
I don't believe there's anything, to be quite honest with you, but obviously, we had to approve them in order to send them out to them, making sure that everybody was agreeing with what we had to document. So, we sent those out, and we're just waiting to get them back. We're understanding that the financial agreements are now in January, and they're now reviewing the financial agreements. And then, once they sign off on everything, that's when the ball control in regard to us making our payments, and then the slide-in and figuring out when Phase 2 starts.
Okay. So, when you say financial agreement, you're actually talking about the governing documents that the—
Absolutely.
Okay. So, if there's any—I would think the only reason they're reviewing them is to potentially make changes. Do I understand that correctly?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I can't say yes or no. I mean, obviously, if you're going to—if I'm going to do things to them, and I'm the developers, I want to see—I want to go up in the agreements and see what's going on with them, but like I said, it was kind of like a method to our madness with regard to pushing the payments off the 50,000.
Right. I understand the idea of pushing off cash flow, but that seems to me to be a separate issue, and I just want to make sure I understand it, and I'm sorry if I'm belaboring the point.
No, it's all right.
But my understanding was that the Township, the administration, and the redeveloper negotiated all of these documents, and then brought them to the council, and the council approved them all. So, I'm just a little confused if they're reviewing them again—first, I don't understand why they'd be reviewing them, because they've already reviewed them before we voted on them, but second, if—are they reviewing them for the potential for changes?
I don't believe so, from what I've been told. I talked to our attorneys today. They said they spoke with the redevelopment attorney, and he said that they just wanted to review the financial documents, and then they were going to get back with us. They didn't believe that there were going to be any changes in the options.
Okay.
Now, I can't guarantee you that, and that's what I was hoping.
And if they are, they would come back to us.
Well, that's—that was my next question.
Yeah, there'll be an amendment.
If there are any changes, then they will come back to the council. Okay. So, this is for Phase 2. Sort of going back to Phase 1, just very briefly, you know, there's this—the whole issue of qualifying expenditures that the redevelopers supposed to make, and then that gets rolled into the 6.3 taxpayer obligated financing. And I know we've been talking about that for a long, long time. Is there any timeline—time horizon on that issue?
Altogether.
So, you're—you're doing Phase 1 and Phase 2 altogether?
Take care of all family groups.
Okay. Okay. So, on Phase 1, I know it's a rather lengthy list of qualifying expenditures. Is that completed yet? Is that something that the council could take a look at?
I wouldn't say it's complete. I think there—I wouldn't say it's complete. I think there are items that we're in agreement with, but I don't know that it's complete.
Let me rephrase that. I don't think it's complete because— I don't think it's complete because there's still some work that's not done. But what, the work that's been done to date, they reviewed, and they made recommendations as to that review. But there are, there is some other stuff that still needs to be done, that hasn't been done, that hasn't, that's why I'm having to review.
Okay. Can I just put in a request that once it's all done, can we take a look at the documents? Just want to see. Just, just to explain to you, there's a reimbursement that's going to take place of qualifying expenditures, I guess for public purpose, that the redeveloper will engage in. So there has to be this process of looking at the, all the expenditures and making sure that they actually do qualify for reimbursement.
We actually have to approve.
Right, right, okay. So that's what we're talking about. Okay, thank you.
That's only for half of the, half of the committee. It's the public infrastructure, right? Public infrastructure, right? Sewer lines, utility lines, et cetera. Wanted to make sure I still remember.
Absolutely.
That's okay. I just had one question for Mr. Sayers.
Councilwoman Castellina.
So the storefronts, they, they do look like they're almost ready to be filled in. Are there any rent, do, how are they, do they have any leases?
I'll be honest with you, I have not spoken to them about the rentals. I can do that, though.
Yeah, could you? I'm just curious, because we're getting close.
There is a person that I deal with who's on site. I can speak with him and find out if they have anything rented and who they're renting from.
Okay, and just curious, see what may be coming in.
I'll check it out.
Just a, you know, just to follow up, and that the developer does have an advertisement on the window?
Yeah, for a while.
So they should, they probably do have, hopefully, you know, some interested parties at this stage, so.
And.
Yeah.
Someone told me they saw something on the internet the other day.
I'm just curious if any leases have been signed off yet.
Yeah, I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council liaison announcements?
Sure.
You look, ready to go?
I'm ready. Thank you, Council President, thank you. Thank you to my colleagues. First up, we'd like to discuss, okay, my notes out here, okay. Our big event coming up will be the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 11, 2018, starting precisely at 12:15 PM here at Town Hall. So everybody come on out for a great time, visit downtown, and, you know, show your Irish side of your, yourself in West Orange, and bring your friends and family. It's always a great parade, always a great time had by all. And we have a good time, too, especially if it's not cold, so we're, we're okay.
Or raining.
Up and coming, too, is our Restaurant Week here in West Orange. A number of additional restaurants have signed on. To get an idea, if you go to www.downtownwo.com, you go to the Downtown Alliance website, you'll see the current restaurants that will be participating in Restaurant Week, which takes place March 11 through March 17. It's a great way to get to know the new restaurants and old restaurants down in the area throughout the township. It's not just through the downtown, but it's also throughout the township. So take a chance, get an idea of what our restaurants in West Orange are. You may be missing some great treasures throughout the town. Also coming up on June 2, 2018, is our annual West Orange Downtown Streets Fair and Edison Day. Come out and have a great town, great vendors, great food, get a chance to see the Edison National Laboratories, and it's free on that day. The, it's a great way to introduce your children and some of our older residents who have never been to the laboratories to see the great treasure that West Orange has. Do you remember, West Orange is the only township, the only town within the United States that has a national park on its main street. So it's something that we're very proud of. Also down at the Edison site, too, are two charging stations. Up until a month or so ago, they were free, but they were installed through the generosity of BMW North America. So they're on the Edison National Laboratories area, so come down and use them. Some updates, we have some new stores in the downtown area. We have a new boutique store called All About Us on Northfield Avenue, right across from the Conoco Station, home decor, you know, antiques, really, really nice things for the household. If you're, you know, a junk addict and like to come in and see, you know, antiques for your home or even, you know, and potpourri, please visit our new merchant down on All About Us. And also Hot Tech Computer Repairs at 296 Main Street, great way to get your computers fixed and your iPads if you need them, and just way to do it in town. And we're getting some good reviews about them. Also, getting final meeting notes for the Rent a House Senior Citizens Meeting and presentation of the proposed capital improvements that'll be released within the next week to the residents and also to the township. So knowing what we're doing at Rent a House, Rent a House is getting some good things. They're working on a lot of issues, the new windows are in, so now we're going to make the presentation on the proposed capital improvements to the building. So the meeting is being planned, they're finalizing. As soon as he finishes the presentation, Council, Councilor Serrano will be able to make the definite date, and this way everything's done all at once. Hopefully, within the next two weeks, we'll have a definite date and the packages for the residents. Little update on pedestrian safety, Council President and my colleagues, that we have going on. My notes, okay. We had our last meeting last Thursday, it was a good meeting. Just an update of what's going on to town through our pedestrian safety meeting. Gregory School in the Gregory area, the new flashing advanced school crossing signs were installed. They are activated by the crossing guard at Gregory Avenue and Walker Road with a key remote, and it's been a good addition to, along with the driveway at Gregory School for safety issues. As we all know, Leddington Road, as of January 29, became a one-way street westbound. Still, the engineer is looking into it and the issues that we're having with, and the additional traffic. Mr. Lepore is working on that with the West Orange Police Department. The other good thing is the Pleasant Valley Way and Alyssa Drive, what we've been talking about for the last five years, the final plans and the submission have been signed off and approved. It will be going out to bid within mid-November, early March. So hopefully, by April, May, we'll see the new traffic light at Alyssa Drive for the high school, something that we've all been wanting to, and we have to thank our partners at the Board of Education, the township, and the County of Essex to really work on how we're making Pleasant Valley Way and our high school parking area safe for everybody and particularly our students. Also talking about Pleasant Valley Way, we have the flashing school speed limit signs are proposed, we have two signs proposed with mast and arm flexing over and extending over the roadway. The bids were received, the specs were received. The school speed limit has been expanded and increased for Pleasant Valley Way to 25 miles an hour, waiting for the additional signs to go up. The signs will be posted in front of PNC Bank just north of Greenwood Avenue, and for the northbound direction, the sign will be placed along the frontage of Degnan Park just north of Cecil Lane. These locations will be finalized in mid-February, late February, with the site restriction for the new traffic signal at Alyssa Drive. So, and early next month, we are now finalizing, and the drawings by NV5 will be completed and presented. Early next month, we'll finalize the Main Street Road Diet, which the county is very much aware of and very supportive of, as well as the improvement for the crosswalks and flashing beacons at Edison Middle School and the Dunkin' Donuts on Main Street. These are standalone projects and as part of our road diet, which is rolling forward. Something that I didn't have written down, but something that was mentioned by the mayor and the administration, that we are proposing to get additional beacon flashing stoplights. We don't know the exact number of how many. Mr. Lepore will get them for me. They're $2,000 each, but we're trying to get as many as we can, which other funds are allocated. But these are great stop signs that warn the drivers and pedestrians that are flashing. They have the red beacons around the whole sign, so they're visible from a further distance and attract people. Other than that, Madam President, just want to make sure I didn't forget anything. Let's see, that, that, nope. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Green. You know, it's, it seems unfortunate to me that this is all good news because these are things that Pleasant Valley Civic Association, the pedestrian safety has been working on. But I think it's unfortunate that we have to go to these extremes when really we have the Be Smart campaign, like, we're doing this because people are not driving safely, and that I really think we need to kick off that Be Smart campaign, education enforcement. When we had that Pleasant Valley Civic Association, I see Roz is here, when we had that forum up at the high school, we had all the panels out, every, all the focus groups, it was all about education and enforcement. And it seems that we really need to do that. So I would like to see that. I mean, these are things, but really, it's just addressing the public that we really need to drive safely.
And if I may add, Council President, we have one more thing we didn't talk about that's not completed yet, put together, but is our proposed springtime rodeo, safety rodeo for the school students and putting more of education within the school system for traffic safety, bike safety, and pedestrian safety in itself. So when I have a finalized version from my committee, we'll present that to the town council, but we have some good people working on it. And also, we're getting a logo.
Well, that's true.
So we're working on a logo for pedestrian safety advisory board and for our events, and Lori's working on it very hard and with the school. And we have a young student is going to be working on it and getting an idea of what our logo, he's making it a project. So it's great, so we're getting our students involved, so thank you for the extra time, Council President.
Of course. Anyone else? Councilman Serrano.
Sure. The councilman did a good job addressing everything that's going on in town. Thank you for that update. I just have a couple of things, Council President. I spoke to Mr. Alpert, working on the Central Avenue quarter, redevelopment zone there. We're going to aggressively, now at this stage, with new leadership on New Jersey Transit, try to look towards bringing in that, that midtown direct stop. We're in competition with our, with our neighbors, so it's going to be one or the other, so just know that at this stage, you're ready to put the pedal, the foot on that pedal in the, moving forward, we're going to be a little bit more aggressive. So hopefully, I spoke to Joe, we're going to be talking to some of our legislators and some of our contacts over at the, at the department to pursue that. It's, it's part of our vision, and it would be important. As a matter of fact, he's very, the developer there, on the Central Avenue side, he's very, he's, he's very far ahead of schedule, and he actually started taking in leases, and he says that a lot of our West Orange residents are moving into the Orange units. So it's interesting that, you know, that it's coming along in that manner. Today, we have a resolution before us, which will, I guess, renew a contract with Main Tracks on the cleanup on our side. So, point is, is that, you know, we're just talking about redevelopment on Main Street, we're also working aggressively on Central Avenue, and we're not, well, we've been working there for years now, since I've been involved, right, since you've been involved in the council, going back to the Neighborhood Preservation Program days to address that section of town. So that's one item that I wanted to report. In addition to that, one of my favorite events is coming up, Council President, the Unico Breakfast. That's coming up on the 25th of February. And that's, Unico is an Italian-American service organization, and every year, they award something called a Brian Piccolo Award. And it doesn't go to the best athlete in the team, but it goes, and it reminds you of me when I used to play, I was a little guy on the football field. And speaking of which, they are bringing the little guy on the football field to be the guest speaker, Rudy himself, from the movie Rudy, that came out back in the 90s, is coming out to talk about courage and leadership and, and the, and to never give up in all your endeavors. So just want to make sure that the public was aware that that's coming up. Again, it's February 25. It's a breakfast at the cafeteria at the high school, and it's, it's a low ticket, it's about $20. And the, the funds go towards scholarships, again, that are awarded to all the area athletes, this Brian Piccolo Award. Brian Piccolo was a player for the Chicago Bears that died prematurely at the age of 26 of cancer. He was an excellent ballplayer and a person that really embodied the body, embodied the true spirit, right, of a student athlete, a student athlete, something that has been missing for a while. So I hope you can all join us on the 25th at the Unico Breakfast. That's all I have for today, Council President. Thank you very much.
Tickets are $10.
Tickets are $10.
$10.
See me or anybody of Italian-American origin, not myself, but, you know, I, I can get you in touch. That's right, yes. Aren't you the treasure?
No, no.
Okay. Oh, you're not the treasure?
No, I serve, I serve breakfast, that's all.
Yeah, we serve.
Yeah, come out, $10 for breakfast on the 25th, and you're going to listen to Rudy, and it'll be interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for the information on New Jersey Transit, because we really want to move forward with that. And understandable about the leases on the Orange side because we had a tour of the building, the Harvard Press Building, and it's absolutely beautiful. So we look forward to that same, the same features, the same structure on the West Orange side. Council?
Yeah, you have a first.
Just very briefly, thank you. The West Orange African Heritage Organization is having one of its major fundraisers this Friday. It's the Black and White Party. It's, the organization each year gives substantial scholarships to graduating seniors from West Orange High School, and this is one of the major fundraisers. It's, the party is this Friday, February 9, from 8:00 PM to 12:30. It's a BYOFND party, so bring your own. It's $35 per person. They have a DJ, and I've had a couple of questions about, do I actually dance there? And lots of people dance, and there's some people that were concerned of having to actually see me dance, but the, the lighting on the dance area is very low. So the chances of you being able to see me trying to dance is extremely low. It's $35 a person. If you need additional information, please call Althea Tweaton at 973-452-1650. It's at the VFW Hall in Roseland. That's, Council President, thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. The West Orange Rotary will present their annual Taste of the World Dinner, the finest restaurants in the area, on Monday night, February 26. They also have wine and beverages, and Supreme Bakery will be there as well. If you'd like to go, it's at the Mayfair Farms. You could call Dory from the West Orange Rotary Club at 973-768-0773. It's always a beautiful event, very well attended, and a lot of great restaurants in, in the area. Many of our own West Orange restaurants will be present as well. So always a good time there, and all the money naturally goes to the Rotary Club, and they do wonderful, wonderful, their fundraisers go for wonderful projects such as, you know, giving scholarships to not only West Orange students, but also many projects like in third world countries with water and evicting polio. So it's a great organization, and hope you could support it. Thursday night, right here in the conference room, is our West Orange Public Relations Commission meeting. Ms. Anderson and Tammy Williams is here, Commissioner on our board. And this year, the Commission's been looking for a project that we could get out to the community. So the last couple of meetings, we've been brainstorming, the Human Relations Commission did a nice job with their, their calendar. The West Orange Chamber is doing a directory that they're working on. So we decided, the Commissioners all voted, and decided that we'll do a West Orange Resource Guide. I'm not exactly sure what we're going to, if that's what it's going to be called, but we're getting outlined together for that project, looking to have it out to the public by the summertime. And, you know, we'll represent a lot of the departments in the township, a lot of great information, and we're looking to have a few pages for Senior Citizens Directory in the booklet as well. So we're excited about that project. It's open to the public, our meeting, so anyone, you know, looking to, to come in and visit us, we'll be there Thursday night at 6:00 PM in Council Conference, I'm sorry, not the Council, Township Conference Room, down the hall. In regards to the Senior Citizen Survey, last week, had a meeting with the Health Department, Ms. Duffy, Ms. De Nova, Susan Iovino, and Montclair State. Very long report, as expected, with the, the long survey that we had. They're reformatting it a little bit for us. We want to be able, that it could be seen visually, some of the responses. Very in depth, very pleased with it, a great deal of information. We had a lot of feedback. with it. A great deal of information. We had a lot of feedback on pedestrian safety in regards to that. So it'll be great for your committee, also with Communications and our Public Relations Group. So great information there for us as well. And just looking forward to it. What Ms. Director De Nova is going to do is she's going to reach out to her other department heads once we get this formulated. Obviously, we're going to present it to the public. We're going to come here. We're going to roll it out. But mainly, we want to get it out and sit down with the grant writer. I know Denise from Millennium is now gone, and we have someone else in place that we're going to sit down and speak with her. Partners for Health has their big grant in the spring, and we really need to get focused on what monies we could apply for and bring back services to our community. So it was a good, you know, good start of what we need to do. More meetings to come. And we'll be sharing that with the public as the Health Department finalizes what they're going to do with the rollout. And also, last week, we had a productive meeting, which I'll go into a little bit further once we talk about the resolution. For those in the audience, Resolution 7018 is back on our agenda in regards to rehiring of Wayne DeFeo. And I look forward to a conversation. Myself, Councilwoman McCartney sat with the administration and reliable last week. I had wanted to get some more information. I was unhappy, you know, expressed, now I'll speak for myself, Councilwoman can speak for herself. And our Councilwoman Krokowiac also wasn't happy at the last meeting in regards to, not so, to services and what's been going on up at the recycling center. So it was a good meeting. Look forward to give you a little more detail, not, you know, not right now, but when we get to that. But things will be changing there in regards to protocol with the administration of township. And I'll let them discuss that when we get to that. So wanted to see a change made. And changes will be made. So, you know, we have this back on the agenda this evening. And one last announcement, for those of you looking to sign up for a West Orange Recreation Program, effective January 2018, the West Orange Direct Department has an early bird discount. So for all those spring programs that you may be signing up for, reach out to the West Orange Recreation Department. A lot of the sports programs are out there, as well as our Senior Citizen Program. So gang on the westorange.org website, click onto the Recreation Department. Their newsletter is up there. And sign up early on Community Pass to receive a slight discount. Thank you, Council President. Oh, wait, one last thing. I want to thank you, Council President. I couldn't make it to the Environmental Commission meeting. I, again, last meeting, we had another tough discussion in regards to rehiring Mr. Lindson and trees and the way some situations have happened in the township. And I just want to thank you for being proactive, inviting him and Mr. Lepore to your meeting and with the residents in the community that had some concerns. So I'm glad you had the meeting. Sorry, I couldn't attend it. But I just wanted to say thank you for being very proactive and for reaching out to the community and trying to resolve some issues that are important. So, you know, it's important that when you have an issue and you come here, that you see that we listen. And I have to thank you, Council President, for being very proactive in regards to that issue at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that meeting went very well, the Environmental Commission meeting. We were scheduled to meet on January 31st, last Wednesday of each month. And I invited everyone that did come out to talk about the resolution for John Lindson. John Lindson is a member of the Environmental Commission. So I invited everyone out to talk about trees. I had mentioned at the last meeting about the Tree Care Expert Regulations that came out recently with the DEP. So we did, we were already reviewing our tree ordinance because we want to incorporate those regulations, better enforcement, better registry of tree professionals that come to town. So we know exactly what's happening in town through the permit process. So the meeting was very productive. We listened to a lot of the concerns that residents had. You know, there were mainly specific things that happened on their street. The engineer was there to talk about repaving and ways to save trees, alternatives. So it was very productive. We will meet again next month. I know that the, well, we meet every month, but now we're going to create a subgroup. John, we also had at that meeting, ANJAC, that's the Association for New Jersey Commission for Environmental Commissions. Representative was there to introduce herself. She serves on the Environmental Commission in Maplewood and also this state organization. So she gave us updates, had a lot of information to share. The timing was perfect. She was scheduled to be on the agenda. So, you know, that just fit in nicely with the tree ordinance. She stayed for the whole meeting, shared the Maplewood tree ordinance because they want to amend theirs as well. John Lindson was able to get ordinances from other towns. So we have a lot of work ahead of us to look at this overarching philosophy, which is what came up at the meeting, an overarching philosophy, to see how we can preserve trees in all the work that we did. So there is a lot of work to be done. Yes, sir.
If I may, Council President, I just want to, I just want to confirm that Mr. and Mrs. Malanga were able to send you a draft as well?
They were there. Sally wasn't there, but, oh, no, I haven't received a draft yet.
Because I just want to incorporate that perspective as well.
Yeah, they were there.
Because they've been working hard and, enjoy shooting, you know, the first go around. So I just want to make sure that their feedback is also made part of what the Commission's working on. When is the next meeting, if you don't mind me asking?
We could look at our HRC calendar.
Excellent.
The last Wednesday in March.
No excuse to miss a meeting anymore.
March 28th. I'll have to leave this right here.
February 28th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, February. Oh, really, March. I'm looking at March. February 28th.
Okay, excellent. Is it okay you buy?
Yeah, it's open to the public, anyone. We had, what was nice was that there were other people there not at our council meeting, but people showed up because they went to the website and saw there was a meeting, and they were interested in environmental issues. So we were happy to have everyone there. It was a lot going on, a lot going on there. We also, on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come, everyone's welcome to. On tonight's agenda, we also have a late resolution that came to us about a Sustainable Jersey grant for $20,000. This is, I mentioned at the Environmental Commission that being the Sustainable Jersey Coordinator, sometimes, often, we don't get points because the township over the year has been so forward-thinking that unless it's part of this program or goes along with the program, we don't get points for it, even though it's already in place. One such thing was a rain garden that the township put together at O'Connor Park years ago, before it was the popular thing to do and get points for. So now, we're applying for a grant. This is to have upgrades at O'Connor Park. It's a $20,000 grant. But because there's direct access to Mount Pleasant School, we can create an ecosystem outdoor classroom space there, which should give us a lot of points. So that's, we're always looking for points on green initiatives with this Sustainable Jersey program. That's on tonight's agenda. I wanted to start though with a thank you to everyone that was able to come out to the Chamber Breakfast last Wednesday, my, as Chair of that breakfast, my committee members that stuffed 300 bags to give out as a welcome bag to everyone that was there. So we were close to 300 people. The mayor had an inspirational speech. I thank Rabbi Tobin, who on the spur of the moment, I asked if he would give his blessing and invocation. And he gave a beautiful prayer for us. Of course, the Wilshire Grand, because they always do a beautiful job at that location. So thank you, everyone, for that. And the Arts Council, let's just move along. The Arts Council, this Sunday is actually Thomas Edison's birthday. So on Sunday, February 11th, the West Orange Film Society, the Classic Film Festival, will feature the Black Mariah Film Festival at 2 o'clock at the AMC Theater. You can get tickets at Fandango. Members, all tickets are $12, but as a member, tickets are $9. So I encourage you to go to West Orange Arts, W-O-Aarts.org, to get more information about the Classic Film Festival. At the West Orange Arts Council Gallery and Gift Shop at 551 Valley Road, the West Orange AP Art Students will have their exhibits start the beginning of March. They had such a showing last year at that exhibit. So again, everyone's invited to go to the art gallery. We were able to get copies of the New Jersey Aging Foundation videos. And they are featured on our local access channels for Comcast customers. It's Comcast 36. For Files customers, it's our local access channel 45. And this one is also timely. The video this month, they're featuring Aging in Place. So if you want to look at that. The Planning Board will meet tomorrow evening here at 7:30. The only application on our agenda right now is a subdivision at 83 Forest Hill Road. And that's all I have. That's it. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975.
Good thing he was here.
The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokowiac?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First on our agenda is public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the lectern, name and address. Welcome.
Hi, Roz Moss-Witzbelsky, 11 Witchwood Drive. I'm going to pass it down. Oh, yeah, a lot of excited, thanks for coming out to the breakfast. It was great. Thank you for stuffing all those bags.
Thank you.
It was a great speech. I'm, exciting things are happening on Pleasant Valley Way, and that's really what brought me here. 525 Pleasant Valley Way is the Cerebral Palsy Home. It's a group home with six individuals living there and a lot of staff. So they've been there for about 20 years. The problem that's occurred in the last year or two is that there, when Kelly Elementary, in the morning, and when the high school is opening, like 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, there's a lot of congestion there. So there are cars parked, sometimes blocking the driveway. And that driveway, it's crucial to have a handicapped space there. So what happened, and I've witnessed many near accidents, and there's no designated handicap spot. So the van, which is crucial in the transporting of these, you know, individuals, is sticking out in the middle of the road, doesn't have, you know, room in the driveway. So actually, this building has a lot of history. 525 used to be Dr. Smalls, you know, the pediatrician in town.
My doctor.
So it's a really special kind of home, healing. As we know, cerebral palsy is brain damage, usually in infancy, which damages coordination and movement is affected. So I don't, you know, this should be an easy thing, right? Just, well, let's just do it. So I don't know why, if they ever replied, maybe Lenny Lepore can kind of fast-track this. Because I had a conversation with Dave Bishop at Cerebral Palsy New Jersey, and he's all for it. I mean, he just said any, you know, he wanted to be here, but he couldn't be here. So I said, I'll just stop by. And it's just, it's just the corridor after 40 years, it needs to be reevaluated. And, you know, we're doing it makeshift, sort of like piece by piece. But maybe it is time for a whole comprehensive look to see, you know, does parking, is parking, you know, necessary in certain spots? Where do we need, maybe eliminating parking so that vision isn't compromised, such as Byd Burger King or Wells Fargo? So these are, that's just one thing. I was hoping that we could help them out. Thank you.
Thank you. Surprising that this isn't already in place, though.
I guess, yeah, well, locations.
It's been there so long. Thank you, Roz. Any, yes. Perfect student.
You look tired tonight, Rosary.
Never.
You're working too hard.
I'm like the Energizer Bunny.
God bless you.
Well, I really give credit to somebody up there. Rosary Morelli Ralph Road, I have three questions. Number one is, the last meeting, Mr. Kaiser made a statement that an attorney was consulted regarding, when the question came up about conflict with Mr. Trank and his son. The attorney was consulted regarding the conflict. Can the public be told who the attorney was, the firm they're associated with, and if the township had to pay a fee for that consultation? Excuse me. During Mr. Krokowiac's presidency, I requested that Mr. Michael Vieira, who works for the county and was involved in the complete rip change and makeover, and a new contractor came in, they got rid of the contractor. And I had asked that Mr. Vieira can come, we spoke, Mr. Krokowiac, and he had telephone tag situation. And I just asked Mr. Krokowiac if you were going to put it on. And you went away till after the results of the survey. I'm asking if you could push it up quickly. It's a complete, completely new program. It's a new contractor. They have new books, new binders. And I'm going to try to get them at the Pleasantale Seniors too, because it's so critical, the transportation. I don't know what bearing or what connection, you know, the survey results would have on the fact that this is a whole new system in place that allegedly is going to improve the services. And the other is the senior issue. I was unpleasantly surprised when I spoke with Patty Duffy after getting several phone calls about the teen techie sessions not continuing. She told me she wasn't aware that they were going to continue. It was a one-time event. I wasn't aware of that, and neither were the seniors. Again, she said she spoke with Teresa De Nova, who said they want to wait for the survey results. Again, I don't understand what that has to do with the survey results. So if you can give me some answers, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Welcome.
Hi, Mark Meyer. I live at 19 Howell Drive. I have a question for you. Has there been any progress about acquiring a location for the Township Garage, if anything's been going on with that? And that's my question. And last week, I read in the Star Ledger a very nice article involving Councilman Cirillo, was written about him and his agency, and it was a really nice article. You should be proud of what you're doing on your job, Councilman. And I must say, it does show that listening to your clients and your clientele and talking to them and working with them has many benefits. And I hope you keep it up. And you can apply those rules also to your job in West Orange.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. For a few months, we've had some consultants working on a master plan for Turtleback Zoo. And we have scheduled a public meeting on February 22nd, that's a Thursday night, 7:00 p.m. in the Education Building at Turtleback Zoo for public input. So we do welcome the public to attend that and share what they see as their vision for Turtleback Zoo in the future. That's all I have for tonight.
Nice. Thank you. Yeah, wait, before you go, can I ask you? Yeah, wait, before you go, can I ask you now, you just heard that about the county transportation system? Is there a new system, or it's just a new person? I guess just, I'm already responding, though, but Mike, when Councilman Kukoviac had asked me about Michael Viera on our agenda, I had just spoken to Councilwoman Castellino about the results, where she had just mentioned at the council meeting that the results are in. There was a whole compilation, and I'm sure that transportation is going to be part of it. So my suggestion would be that it would be a more comprehensive response that we can give with the county and the township. That's what I thought. I mean, is there?
As far as I know, I don't know what's new about the system. We've had the same vendor for a couple of years. I think at one point, we had some difficulty with our dispatch system, but that was with the actual technical dispatch system. It had nothing to do with the company. I can check with our senior services to see if there is anything new, but like I said, to my knowledge, there isn't. And whenever council president would like a presentation, I'm sure we can arrange that, whatever the appropriate time is.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions?
Are you closing public comment?
Any other? Seeing none, closed public comment. Councilwoman Cirillo?
Thank you, Council President. I do want to ask, if possible, with respect to the senior services, let's try not to discontinue any of the services because of the survey. For example, like the teen techie program?
No, 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 no.
Based on the, you know, based on the feedback that we've received, it has been a very popular program. So I know that the Board of Education is involved with that program. So we have to see if, you know, we can somehow speak to the Board of Education or, you know, whatever.
I could clarify that.
Excuse me, can I please? Thank you. Whatever we can do on the administration side to make sure that these programs continue and that there's no, even if, you know, in some instances, we may not be the responsible party or the administrators of the program, maybe reach out to the Board of Education to find out what's going on. The reason why is because, you know, maybe there is conflicting information that's also being relayed out to the community. Just let's find out what's going on. And if there's anything I can do, I mean, if I can place a call, I will know to do that. But it sounds like it's not only for, you know what? One of the most attractive things about the program is the involvement of the kids, right? The kids actually are connecting with our senior population. I mean, that in itself is such a great benefit. And on the other hand, we have our senior population that could absolutely learn from our millennials and what it is that's going on out there. Actually convinced one of our seniors today to use email. So I'll be giving them a lessons of email and then actually purchase a tablet and start looking online. I'm still yet to convince my mother, but I'm working on that. She's 64 years old now. Lastly, Mr. Meyerowitz had a question about the Township Garage and the relocation. How are we doing with that? Are we still just assessing for the time being potential locations? I know that one of the possible locations that we looked at last year was Mount Fuji in that location, but that didn't work out. I don't know if the administration has any update on what's going on with respect to the relocation of that property. So, and also, the other item that I would like the administration to address is the handicap request, the handicap parking space request. Now, is Mr. Lepore aware of this? And if he was not, then, you know, just make sure that, you know, we get on it. It sounds like a homerun and a no-brainer.
I was going to answer that question, Councilman.
No pun.
County, right.
I just saw Roz hand it over to you.
If, in fact, we're going to do it, if we do do it, it has to be approved by the county.
And I think Roz just relayed some information to you.
You approve first. Yeah. What I'm saying, you guys have to agree. Yeah. Because it's your vote. I'll speak to you about it.
Yeah.
And I can bring that up.
It's your phone number, will you?
Thank you, Ms. Tej. That's informative.
Thank you.
So it starts with us, and then he goes to the county.
Right.
Terrific. Terrific.
It just seems surprising that it isn't already in place, so I'll be curious to hear what the engineer has to say.
It is.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, it seemed like you wanted to respond to the mentors or?
Yeah, the tech program is safe and sound. First of all, it's a program that the Mountaineer mentors at the high school, supervised by Stephen Sekela, offered to our residents. I'm sorry. I have it. Oh, boy. Maybe Councilwoman Guarino want to respond to the voice back.
About what?
Rare moment. Rare moment. I lost my voice this time.
You're never at a loss of words.
Okay. Sorry, folks. Oh, boy. Okay, now you gotta go. I gotta wait.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. I'll be brief. Thank you, my colleagues and Council President. Roz, thank you for bringing this. It's people like you who are members of our board, the Preston Safety, to bring these things and highlight these issues to our board, and we make things happen. Everything that we've worked on, particularly about stats and everything else, ever since this board came in, now the right stats are being reported, and we shouldn't miss another opportunity again, especially when it comes to reporting data. And I think that better relationship with the county engineering department needs to reflect that if they do do a grant and the data from West Orange isn't there, we should be notified so we can make sure we get it there. Because the data is there, it's just that we shouldn't miss an opportunity. And thank you for bringing us to this. Roz, I sent this, your thing, to Mr. Lepore, and he'll look at it and everything else, and we'll get back. It's something that, you know, needs to be addressed, if it can be, and see what the county's attitude is. But it's something we should look into, especially with cerebral palsy. You know, something for my family, so it's something for parking and something that we need to look into, so thank you. And that's all I have to say, Council President.
Yes, thank you. I just want to follow up on Ms. Morelli's, some of her questions, because they haven't been addressed yet. She posed a question that, at the last council meeting, Mr. Kaiser said that when Mr. Trank's son was going to join the Planning Board, that the administration consulted an attorney about whether that was any sort of conflict of interest. And Ms. Morelli asked if that information about who the administration talked to, what firm they're with, and what the fee was, whether that was publicly available. Is that?
We're going to have to consult with Mr. Kaiser. I believe Mr. Kaiser was, the attorney who looked at it. I don't know if Mr. Kaiser consulted with someone else. I know that certainly Mr. Kaiser looked at it. I do not know of any outside counsel, and certainly no counsel has been retained without authorization by this governing body.
Okay.
So I'll have to consult with him. He's out of town, as you know.
And?
And also, again, the statute is clear on its face, just so you know.
Ms. Morelli also posed the question about whether we could get Mr. Viera here sooner rather than later. And I see two good points, because I know the survey question does have some transportation points, transportation issues that probably, if he was here, he could address that. But I do hear Ms. Morelli saying she'd like to get him here sooner rather than later. And as you know, he had agreed to be here tonight before we wanted to put it off. So I don't know how to settle something like that. Maybe he could come both times, or, I don't know. But if Ms. Morelli says it's important to get them here sooner rather than later, I'd like to do that. But I don't know exactly who makes that decision. And then I wanted to hear more from Councilwoman Castellino, if you're okay, about the techie sessions. And also, both Mr. Meyerowitz and Councilman Cirillo asked about what the status was of the search for a garage. I guess the public works.
Yeah.
Yeah, the public works. And that, we haven't heard back from the administration on that. And that's all.
Okay. I can speak now. Sorry, folks. Are you ready, Councilman?
Yes.
Try again.
Yeah, I'll try again. Okay, so in regards to the tech sessions, as you know, we had them in September and October at the high school. They were great. The second one wasn't as well as attended as we would have hoped for, but Mr. Sekela up at the high school is more than happy to put together something for us any time. We just figured we'd wait till the spring, till the weather was a little bit better to get most folks out, and we'll try, you know, try to have another one in the spring. So it's something that we're working with the school. They've been having other events that the kids are doing as well, so it's not something, you know, I'll have to talk to Mrs. Duffy. But, you know, there isn't funding for it, but we kind of found funding for the other two sessions, and we'll see what kind of grant money we could get. In regards to the senior survey, I don't want anyone to think that we're going to be taking programs away or, you know, that's not what this is about. We're going to get the information. The health department's going to look at it. We're going to look at the needs, look at the input, and then make recommendation. You know, again, you know, things cost money. So what we have already, for example, one of the comments back on the survey was, they would like to see more programs and are willing to pay for them. So that's something we could try, that maybe we could offer something that may cost a little bit more, but we see folks take advantage of it in the community. A lot of times, people can't afford that, but some people had asked for that. So there was a lot of great comments that is in the body of the survey that we'll go over. That is a whole presentation, so when we're ready, and that's why I wanted it, when we looked at it, we made some recommendations to Montclair State. You know, for example, like they formatted some of the answers in a paragraph form where if it was an easy bullet form, you know, as we do the presentation, it's easier to read, so you don't miss certain points. So once they clean that up, hopefully, we're going to have a meeting next week, and, you know, the sooner we get it done, the quicker, the quicker. So I'm hoping the school moves a little bit faster, because there are some grants we could apply for in the springtime, which we want to do so. But in regards to transportation, communication, housing, many multiple facets are covered. So it will be, you'll need a good 30 minutes or so to schedule. As far as any questions in regards to transportation, I'll leave that up to Council President. In regards to doing it that same evening, or if you have time, I know the last agenda was kind of packed, so tonight, you know, again, I don't know how long the presenter would need. That's up to you to schedule that in. But I, it doesn't have to be that night. It would complement that night for one of the things, or down the road, it may fit in when we do a transportation piece, but I'll leave that up to your preference.
Okay, we'll talk more.
And Roz, yeah, Dr. Small, you know, God bless him. He was a great man. He made house calls to our house. My mom didn't have a car, and he would come to our house. And back in the days when we were younger and, you know, he was wonderful. You know, my mom, we had some financial difficulties growing up, and, you know, money was never an issue. He would come, have my mother bring us in. God bless him. He was a saint, that man. And so hopefully, we'll be able to work something out. I can imagine Mr. Sares, Ms. Lepore will have to speak to the school, because I'm sure we can't stop and load in the morning when, you know, I guess they'll have to figure that out with the times of when there's, you know, heavy traffic flowing in Kelly in the morning and the afternoon. But I would hope they could at least work some kind of stop and load, maybe not handicap park all day, but stop and load, whatever they could work out, would be beneficial to this service here. So, thank you, Council President.
You're making me think that we received a grant a few years back for the Leader of Light program when we introduced the LED solar circuits at the, working with the high school, and the curriculum that was designed at the high school that the Leader of Light organization uses now nationwide. But that was through a grant, and I'm wondering now with this student, if there is, that was through an innovative program grant, that if we look at this, pairing seniors and students, I know that the Sustainable Jersey program is in the schools. That's something we could look at, a grant to keep it up like a workshop on a regular basis. Look at that. The question about public works, now that the area has been designated, the next step is to actually create this vision plan. So the mayor is planning on doing open public meetings for people to come in with ideas of the vision for the public portion of that area needed redevelopment. So to answer your question, Mark, no, there hasn't been anything since the area's been designated, because public meetings haven't started yet. And thank you about the master plan, because that's come, Anthony, thank you about the master plan information at the education center at Turtleback Zoo, because that's come up a few times. I know the gentleman sitting in front of you appreciates the information. Madam Clerk?
You want?
I thought you were going to defer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right now, we are still currently looking at possibly the Essex Green site for the garage and for the animal shelter. Probably in that 10 Rooney area circle in the back by 280, so it would be far off from anything you could ever see. We have not looked at any other sites as of yet, but that's what we're still focused on.
If I could, if you recall, at last meeting, there were some questions that were raised about issues of spending and an architect related to the public works initiative. And there was also a question about the not-to-exceed issue with Mr. Greco's firm's contract to prepare the redevelopment study. I don't know if now's a good time to do that, to actually address it, if you guys are prepared to do it, or if we want to wait till matters pending, but I thought since it was?
We're going to go into executive session at one point, because obviously, that involves matters of potential litigation. So we should discuss whatever we're going to discuss with regard to those issues in executive session.
Is that the question you're asking? I think the question was about spending, John, I remember it was a cumulative. We were looking at, maybe there were different amounts that were spent.
Yeah, I can address that. I can address the one, the issue over Mr. Greco. We have to wait on that. Our purchasing agents have been on vacation the past couple of weeks and just back, so I don't have all the information on that one. As far as the information on the architectural studies, the council did indeed pass a resolution authorizing $25,000 for the firm for looking at the location of the Mount Fuji. Once we decided not to pursue that, in essence, that approval died, because we no longer move forward. We're not looking at that site. When we started looking at the redevelopment site, because the amount that we were looking at was less than 17,500, that does not require council approval, so we move forward on that basis.
I think you explained that last time.
Yeah, we went over this last meeting.
I thought he said he wasn't sure.
No, I was sure. What I wasn't sure was not looking at the actual documents themselves, but I did know that indeed that that was the case in terms of what we were allowed to do.
So could you send us that contract, please? The council?
I'm sorry?
Could you send us the contract for the architect? Did you actually engage in a contract, or did you just?
They were approved in 2015.
You're talking about the one that the council approved?
I'm talking, I thought you just said that because it was less than 17,500?
Correct.
That it did not have to get approval from?
Right, we don't have a contract per se. We did it on the basis of the purchase order, that we had already had encumbered funds, but we didn't spend, obviously, over the 17,500.
It was an original contract when they were looking at Mount Fuji.
Yes, okay.
Back in 2015.
So the money was appropriated then, as you're saying?
The money was appropriated then, but that approval expired, because we didn't use that, didn't use your approval in order to move forward with it. We did move forward with it based on the authority that we have as being able to approve purchases and engaging vendors under 17,500.
Okay. Could you send us that purchase order if there wasn't actually a separate contract? Was there a contract that you signed with the firm for Fuji?
I do.
For the Mount Fuji site?
That I do not know if we have, but if we have that, I'll send it to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Clerk?
Okay. We're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting January 23, 2018.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are there any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Counsel.
Just, just discussion on a.
Councilman, if you have anything, yes, sir.
Administration would like to pull 69-18.
You want to pull it from the agenda?
No, pull it from the entire.
Pull it off the agenda.
Okay.
62.
I had a question on that one, okay?
I mean, L.
Correct. And 60-18 calls for the resolution appointing two members to the rent leveling board appointed by the majority of the town council. One is going to be for a one year and one is going to be for a two year. So you do need to decide.
Okay.
Which of those two people are going to take those two.
Would you get L or you want to?
No, I was going to pull it. We were going, because I figured we'd have to discuss that anyway. Yes. So 60-18, that's for the two people on the rent leveling board.
And you nominated one, I nominated Chris O'Connor, so we'll discuss, we'll talk to them and see.
Yes. And then I also wanted to pull agenda item G, resolution 6418, the resolution authorizing the township to close on the purchase of the property located at 665 Eagle Rock Avenue and purchase title insurance. Agenda item M, which is resolution 7018, Councilwoman Castellino mentioned this earlier in the meeting. It's revisiting the annual contract for Mr. DeFeo, who is the environmental compliance officer for the environmental center, recycling center up on Mount Pleasant Avenue. And then I, I didn't know whether we needed to pull agenda item O, resolution 7218, to have the executive session related.
If you pull it, then.
Yeah. I'll leave it on that.
Okay. But here's the reason I'm asking. I just noticed this on the, on the contract, I mean, on the resolution, I'm sorry, let me just pull it up here. On the back page, it says, more specifically, the council may discuss in closed session the following topics, 7218, resolution authorizing an executive session for the purpose of discussing with township council potential litigation regarding the designation of the Essex Green and Executive Drive area as an area in need of litigation. And I, I didn't know if that was a Freudian slipper, but I just wasn't sure, does, does that affect whether?
No, I fixed it.
It's a change.
Yeah, we'll change. Yeah, I fixed it on the agenda, but not on that.
Okay. I have a question.
Oh, Councilman Green.
Thank you. On resolution, I have a question on resolution 58-18. Just, just some points of order and everything else. It's a great person to have and it's a great, you know, personnel to generate additional revenues, but my questions are, is there any way we can get additional coverage, additional time, or even additional person to do parking enforcement? Because parking enforcement is a great way to generate revenues. And that's how a lot of townships, South Orange generates, and you should know, Mr. Gross, South Orange generates over a million dollars, and correct me, I'm wrong, in parking revenues between its parking lots and its parking enforcement. Also, in that scope, you know, are you looking, are we, are, is there any intention of looking at replacing or upgrading our meter system, our parking meter system, and also with signage? And then, of course, enforcing it because these are great ways to increase the township revenue. It's the only, only ticketing the township gets to keep the revenue, other than, you know.
Council, we are definitely going to have, having discussions with the mayor about the future of this program and where we might go and certainly something that can be discussed as part of the budget process. But to be clear, the objective of, of ticketing and enforcement is, is just, is compliance and not the raising of funds. It is, it does occur and it is an offshoot of it, but truly what ultimately happens, and I can tell you that from experience as well, when the fines gets to a certain point, you begin to get compliance and then the funds drop off. So, you know, ultimately, this really is about compliance.
Yeah, I, and thank you, thank you for, I mean, corrective. I'm just saying, I know it's not our goal.
It's important to have that on the record, I think.
No, that's fine, thank you. I'm just saying it's like, you know, but anywhere is, you know, if enforcement creates revenue generation, I'm hopeful it's.
Councilman, quick.
As you probably know, councilman, I've been talking about this issue for a long time, so I'm glad to hear, I may have an ally here up at the dais, but one of the things I've been talking about is he's, this officer is intentionally a part-timer to maintain part-time status so we don't have to give him a whole lot of benefits. So it's, it's a significant benefit to the, to us, to the town, budget-wise.
We have two part-timers.
Exactly. That's exactly what I, I hope we will look at during the budget process. And I actually asked Mr. Gross for tonight about what his cost was and then also what revenue he brings in. So I would like to make that sort of revenue piece of that part of the discussion during the budget, during the budget.
Well, again, we cannot distinguish, we can't provide you a direct line between whatever ticketing that has been done by, through this program directly to how much revenue's come in from. We just don't, we don't track that kind of data. Certainly, probably, we could find out how many tickets are written, but I can't tell you, can't, cannot tell you how many have been adjudicated.
I'm sorry, you can tell us how many tickets are written, but not.
Written, but not adjudicated.
Oh, okay.
And how much, how much fine went attributed back to that individual.
Well, that would be fine because we could, we could, we could still have some sort of quantification for that. Yeah, if you could get it to us for, you know, the last two, three years, I think that would help us figure that out.
I wasn't, I wasn't even, I had this circle to pull also because I was surprised to see the resolution on the agenda because it is always a budget hearing discussion that we have. We don't have a parking authority, but we do talk about.
Well, this, this, just to be clear, this resolution does not set labor levels or such. This just gives the authorization. It's a require, this is pretty much housekeeping. It requires you to do this resolution so that he continues to have the authorization to work. So that's why it's on for tonight. It's not, it is not on to pre-empt any discussion at the budget.
But we will.
Okay. Yes, Councilman.
I have a question for Mr. Sares in regards to, to this. What zone does he cover?
He covers the whole town.
The whole town? Okay. So the issues that we were having down, down the hill in the back areas with the, you know, parking up to the corner within the 50-foot stop sign, blocking driveways, I mean, he's, he's all over.
Yep.
Okay. Because I do agree, and compliance is, is very well needed in those areas. That's all, that's my question.
Okay. We're still pulling, anyone else have a resolution that they wanted to pull or discuss?
No, it's been pulled.
So is it?
Is, do you?
Oh, let me see. Oh, I had a question on resolution 6718. That was a resolution with the township's municipal alliance for a fiscal year. I was just hoping that this grant, is there a collaboration with Operation Hope? If, if you knew, if that.
Is this the yearly, the regular?
This is, yeah, this, this is, this is a program that's run every year and it's based on, based on monies that we receive from the county or through the county. I can't answer your question as to what, but I'll certainly can have that conversation with the director and hopefully make sure that some of that. I suspect there is because I know that there's a personal, there's a personal connection there in terms of.
She organizes the schedules.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would certainly believe there is, but we'll check and see.
Okay. Anything else?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. The first resolution pulled this evening was resolution appointing two members to the rent leveling board appointed by the majority vote of the township council. One member will be appointed for a one-year period and the other member will be appointed for a two-year period. And the two people who were recommended were Anthony Capania and Chris O'Connor.
They were nominees that Councilman Kropovik and I had submitted to everyone, so I, between us, we will call them and.
And decide who gets a one and who gets a two.
Can we just decide? Oh, I haven't, no, I didn't realize that there was, there was an issue with the two different. Do we want to just decide? Do we want to flip a coin? Or do you?
Sure. We'll give Anthony two years, Chris can do one.
You nominated one, so who would you, you know?
Yeah, let's, let's make Mr. Capania to do two years.
Okay.
So we're going to settle this right now?
That's easy.
If not, they can go in a duel or something, or he can, or Anthony can resign, you know?
Open it up all over again.
You hope not.
Yeah, if the year he doesn't like it.
You hope not.
Well, if he wants to give.
Okay, is there?
All right, so Karen, we're to have Anthony.
Yes, I have that. And now I just need a motion to approve the resolution.
I make a motion.
As amended?
Not as amended because I was waiting for, to see who was appointed. And who, who seconded that?
Second.
Okay, no, you did the first.
Okay, Jerry.
I did.
Okay, so councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Sorrelli?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kropovik?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. The next resolution pulled was G, 64-18, a resolution authorizing the township to close on the purchase of the property located at 665 Eagle Rock Avenue and the purchase of title insurance for the purchase of the property. This was pulled by Councilman Kropovik.
Yeah, I just wanted to pull this because I, I didn't think it was, you know, I think it was one of those nice to haves and not a must-have, so I just didn't want to vote for it. I know everybody else has pretty much supported this, but I just didn't want to have to vote for it.
Title insurance is not a must-have?
No, no, this is to close on the purchase of the property.
Oh, okay.
So the administration would like to comment because obviously we've made substantial progress, all with full knowledge of the town and this town council. When, this property has been fouled and vacant, as everybody in this town knows, for probably four or five years. ExxonMobil, we discussed this when we brought this to the council, probably four or five months ago, ExxonMobil has some monitoring wells and is a, I think it's a $38 billion company that will ensure that this property is, is safe and cleaned up and complies with the law. We, the goal here, as the mayor has indicated, is to address the issue of shopping parking. It's been a major issue in Pleasantdale. This administration and the last administration have been committed to helping Pleasantdale area. Everyone on this council is aware that there is a transaction pending which will affect the property across the street, the church robbery. As part of that transaction, there will be commuter parking that will be preserved and carved out, and that is in the midst, I believe, of being closed and finalized, and that will be, the administration believes, an excellent turnkey commuter line. However, as you know, it's going to be a bank and therefore there will not be shopper parking available there during normal shopping hours, other, well, there just won't be. So net-net, this property was researched, investigated, I think Chief Abbott took the lead in canvassing properties. We determined who the owner is. We met with the owner, we had extensive negotiations, this was all brought before the council and council approved this. Subsequent to that, we wanted to ensure that the ExxonMobil aspect was critical. Our environmental consultant, who this council approved, identified a couple of areas and you will recall, I'm going to call it a sonogram because I don't know the exact terminology, but they basically went over it to make sure there was nothing else that potentially would create any environmental concerns for the township. As a result of that, they identified one area that was near the sidewalk. In the old days, because even when we were younger, sometimes gas pumps were closer to the street. So therefore, they said, our environmental counsel, Mr. Isabel, and Matrix said, we should dig there. The most expeditious and inexpensive way to do that digging was two feet below what I'll call the sidewalk area, was to basically pay Matrix a $400 fee to supervise and ask our Department of Public Works people to bring a Batco out and do the digging. That digging was approved by this council, I believe, at the January 9 meeting. It occurred a week or so afterwards and it turned out it was some oil piping, but it was certainly not what we were concerned about, which was a fiberglass tank, which would then have required a further review and analysis. So the bottom line is, as a result of the Matrix report, as a result of our environmental sign-off, the administration now seeks to close that transaction. The purchase price, as you all know, is $400,000. Title insurance is a statutory rate. There is nothing occurring other than what title insurance would cost. It's obviously critical to make sure that there not ever be any anomaly as to our, our right to ownership. Obviously, Mr. Gross has indicated the funds are available and obviously the administration's goal, and I spoke to the mayor today, is to ensure this is a shopper parking lot available and open, hopefully as quickly as humanly possible. Obviously, it will be paved, obviously it will continue to be subject to the monitoring wells, but we'll be able to go ahead and do the paving and leave the areas open, we've been told, for ExxonMobil to complete its monitoring that'll go on. So this will end up being a win-win-win for the town. We'll take a piece of property that's been fouled for many years, the property will get environmentally cleaned up, it will be a parking lot for shoppers and it will help that area. So based upon that, all of that, that's why it's back before the council tonight, final approval, we'll close by the end of February. The money's available and then we'll move, the mayor said, it will be a top priority to get this lot open as quickly as possible.
Put that on your list, Pleasant Valley.
So that's the administration's position and that's the update.
Councilman Kropovik.
Yes, thank you. Just, Mr. Trink obviously knows a heck of a lot about this deal and hits a lot of the highlights. My concerns were, I guess, threefold. One, the, the property has an appraised value of roughly, I'm sorry, an assessed value of roughly $200,000. So we're going to be paying double what the assessed.
That's totally inaccurate, as you know, we went out and got an outside appraisal council made.
Could you please let me finish?
Absolutely, absolutely. I just want the facts to be correct, council.
Could you just let me finish, please?
Absolutely, please.
Thank you.
Take your time.
Thank you.
I'm here for this only one.
So it's on our assessed value for $200,000. We got an appraisal for, that it's worth $460,000. So I'm a bit concerned that we've got that, that significant difference between the assessed and the appraised value because the assessed value is supposed to reflect market value. So I'm concerned about that. I also wanted to get, I also asked, I guess, in my questions to the administration, how much the appraisal had cost, and I still don't have that, so if somebody could follow up on that. I think Mr. Lepore said the, the property description's going to cost a little over $2,500, but I think he may not have seen the other issue.
You just said appraisal. The appraisal was long done, as you quoted, quoted correctly. You're talking about the survey, Sarah. You're talking about survey, that's what you're focused on.
Could you please ask Mr. Trink to stop interrupting?
I think he just is trying to clarify your question.
I was just trying to answer your question, I apologize.
He's trying to clarify the question. Were you talking about the appraisal or the survey?
I'm talking about the fee that we played Hendrix to do the appraisal. That's what I'm asking about. And I asked about it in my questions yesterday, I didn't get an answer.
I didn't see this, okay.
Okay. The other concern I have is that there is a lot of parking being opened up across Pleasant, I'm sorry, Eagle Rock Avenue as part of the, the transaction with the bank there. So we're going to be getting more parking. And the third thing is, I've mentioned before, is that I'm very concerned about our debt levels. And I, I think we've already said that we're going to borrow the money to, to acquire this, this property. So those two things just have me concerned. And that, just one next thing.
John, any, can you shed any light on any of those questions?
I don't have.
About the appraisal item?
No, I don't have.
1,200, not 25, but.
I'll have to look it up.
You go back.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman.
No, I'm done.
Okay. You know, I share your concerns. We're all concerned about our debt, as we always discuss at, at all our meetings, and I'm looking forward to a full budget hearing, that Saturday, March 17th, where we have everything out on the table. that Saturday, March 17th, where we have everything out on the table. You know, that, you know, it's, it's a business corridor for us, and we have to make it a viable corridor for that business community. There's a great lot behind, and Ms. Moskowitz just here, she has her property, but there isn't access from her lot onto Pleasant Valley Way. So this would really help and benefit all the businesses by CBL Fine Art around the corner there, across the street, Grilera. I know it's hard for them, like at night, people don't like to cross twice across the street. They could sneak into the bank lot at night, but this will be a easier cross path for them. I had a friend who owned one of the businesses, and I won't say which business, but she went back to Verona because the foot traffic, you know, with parking, she was getting complaints of, of the parking, was crossing over in the daytime when they were parking by the church. You know, without the crossing guard there, it gets pretty dangerous situation. So I think this will help the business community in that section. I hear you. We always have to weigh the, you know, the budget versus the, the need of the community, but there is a strong need there. And I know the business community and residents in that area are very excited about this project, so I'll be happy to approve this tonight. In regards to the title expense, as Mr. Trank mentioned, it is mandated by the state, so that's why I like selling title insurance. Of course, it's not my company, full disclosure, but, you know, ABC, you know, I'm just selling service, not pricing, because it, we're mandated by the government.
I just want, no, you're not, don't have anything to do with this.
No, 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 no.
You had nothing to do with this.
No, that's why, yeah, that's why I just stated.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I never, yeah, I know, I don't have any conflicts within any township business.
Thank you.
But this is a great project for, for the business community and the Pleasantdale Center.
Councilwoman, I just wanted to add to...
Oh, yes, I've given up the floor.
And to, and to add, and to what Councilwoman Castellino said, you know, we spoke about this at our pedestrian safety advisory board meeting, how this will be a benefit for pedestrian foot traffic, for the safety. Ms. Moskowitz had brought it up too, you know, she's a major owner in that area, and she's looking forward to getting the more, because everybody basically is using her parking lot as an overflow, so it's affecting her, you know, tenants. So basically, this will give us more parking, more foot traffic throughout the whole four corners of the area, and it'll be a benefit. I mean, I, I look forward to moving this forward, because it's a benefit to our merchants and to our residents. It's, it's a good thing.
I agree.
And I would add, my recollection of the layouts that were done, I think through Mr. Lepore's department, is it's between 18 and 20 spaces. So it's significant, you know, in terms of shopper parking, and everybody knows, you want to pull in, get out, run into the store, and come out. You don't necessarily, even if the commuter parking behind the bank was available, although, again, we want that to be commuter for, you know, people going on the buses and whatnot, this will be more visible from the street, which is generally the way people in shopping areas decide where and how to shop. And I, I just have to clarify again, I, I know Councilman Krikovjak knows this, assessed value does not equal market value.
Yeah.
Different, there are apples and, and oranges, and, and so...
Look at our own tax bills at home with our own homes.
Exactly. So, I mean, Mr. Hendricks is a, a certified appraiser and has done appraisals for this town, and if he came up with that the fair market value was $460,000, that was his analysis based upon all the appraisal techniques that he's licensed and required to follow. So the fact that the assessment is different has to do with equalization and other issues that Mr. Gross can address, but that doesn't equate to true value.
Like a motion to...
Counselor?
Well, he was...
No, go ahead.
Are you done? Just for administration housekeeping with this project, I guess Mr. Lepore, like when, especially during the heavy traffic hours, because there is heavy traffic in, in the evening with that lot, that I can't imagine that there'd be like a, out of that lot to make a left turn at the hours of six o'clock or whatever it may be.
It's a county road, so I'm sure...
Yeah, we're going to have to...
That'll be...
And, and, and second being, I, I mentioned earlier, the evening, that the Public Relations Commission were working on, on a booklet, and one of our pages will be a town map with all the parking lots in it. We need a name for this parking lot, so we can map it and give it Google, get Google Maps to identify with it. So just two housekeeping items on that. I'm done.
Good.
Okay. No, as I said, we make a motion to move the...
There we go.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikovjak?
No.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution M 70-18, Resolution Authorizing a Professional Services Agreement with Wayne DeFeo to Serve as the Environmental Compliance Officer for the year 2018. Councilman Krikovjak?
Yes, thank you. I, I think I beat Councilwoman Castellino to, to pulling this.
That's okay.
I just, this, this is one of many annual contracts that was on the agenda for our last council meeting. Councilwoman Castellino, Council President McCartney, and I voted against it, and the, the contract proposal failed. And then, subsequent to that, the administration had conversations with the Councilwoman and Council President, and I wasn't a part of that, so I just wanted to find out specifically what, what had changed or what will change or going forward with this. That's all.
So basically, last week, our last meeting, you know, I showed my discourse for the, for this, for the contract. I just felt we weren't proactive. I'm sorry, that, we were reactive and not enough proactive. And so I appreciate the administration setting up a meeting for myself and Councilwoman with, to speak with them, and Reliable Wood and Mr. DeFeo came in. So we had a discussion. I grieved, you know, what I saw out there with Summit Ridge. That was primarily my, the nursing home and on Summit Street, a lot of the smell seemed to go that way this past year, as, instead of going the opposite direction. And the way we report complaints, we were looking to, hopefully, to have the township be a little more proactive in regards, because our public works personnel is up there more on a daily basis. Our health department stops in there. So Ms., oh, and Officer, I'm sorry, Chief Abbott, who, as you know, is in charge of operations, was present, and so he was giving, and Mr. Sayers, I'll let you, you know, talk to the directive that Chief Abbott is going to take with his staff, but they're going to have a more proactive approach, see, you know, smell something, see something, report it directly to him. He'll get it to Mr. DeFeo, and this way, they could address it a lot quicker, as opposed to being reactive, more proactive. With that, I have to give kudos to the vendor, Reliable Wood. You know, they're trying to be a, a great partner with us, and they already was to, could take out some of their product, because there was a lot of product buildup, as you know, with Superstorm Sandy. They've been trying to get rid of product for the past couple of years. And so they have other sites, and so that was one of the remedies that they came up with, where they would remove some of their product. I don't have the exact amounts. I know we discussed this the other day when I, I told you, we had the meeting, and I, I reached out to you. But, and another remedy was to try to get a lot of the, the churning of the mulching done earlier in the daytime, so if, you know, the residents are out in the afternoon hours. So they were going to, you know, examine how they do, again, there's a lot of challenges up there with, as we know, with the wind and, you know, being so close in a residential location. So I, I just felt that they were going to be more proactive this coming year. And so I'm a little, I'm prepared now to move forward with, with Mr. DeFeo and the contract. So, and we'll see by next year. So.
And I'll add that after that meeting, right, so after that meeting, we did meet with the vendors also.
Yeah, we did went up there, too.
And they explained that there are new DEP regulations in place. So they are licensed to intake 10,000 cubic yards.
Yes, 10,000 with the rose.
Right, and they've already reduced it to 5,400. So we should already see a change in some, if not all of the complaints that, that we have seen. And the directive that did come out of this meeting, or the fact that we did pull it, and said we want things done in real time, not after the fact, to make sure that they are constantly in compliance, was to have the health department, that's, we received that directive, that the health department would be, and Department of Public Works, they're on the site all the time, so they can be there in more conscious effort.
Better communication all around.
Much better. So definitely open the lines of communication. The contract does expire in October, so we can revisit all of this come October to see that they have been in compliance, or when we review the contract.
Just so you know, Mr. Fonzino has already been up there once already and called in an order complaint, and obviously, when the county get, it happens all the time, once the county gets here, the wind blows the other way.
It has to be a verifiable, it has to be a verifiable.
It has to be a verifiable, and it wasn't a verifiable complaint, but it was an order complaint. So, so far, it's been working out pretty well. Our people have been up there doing, doing their job.
Oh, and...
And the wind is a major factor in that operation up there.
Biggest factor. The biggest.
Right. And they did plant a, a big burn and, and more bushes, and they're, you know, they're, they're doing some other, you know, landscape design to help with, you know, with the, with when the wind blows, to hopefully block it a little bit. So, but they seem very, you know, concerned, and they've, really, the big remedy was moving some of the product out of there. I mean, unfortunately, you know, it's built up over the years with the, with the storms and whatnot, so, so we'll see. They seemed...
It actually looked very neat.
Positive that, you know, but again, it, I know it's still going to smell, but to the extent of the smell, hopefully, we'll, they'll be able to calm it down a bit, because that was our concern, to be proactive with the situation. And I appreciate the administration for putting together the meeting for us. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve 70-18?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krikovjak?
No.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
All right, there are no ordinances on for tonight's meeting. Pending matters, new matters, and council discussion?
Except for the executive session. Is there anything else that you'd like to discuss at this time?
I, I do.
Yes, please.
Just real quick, you know, going back to parking lots and, and budgets, I know, Mr. Sayers, I had mentioned in regards to the downtown parking lot here. I know with budget season coming up, if there's anything we could do with the redesign of that.
And Lenny's actually working on that.
Yeah.
I'll say the redesign of...
I saw that email last week, but he's already, he already has somebody working on it.
Right.
Okay. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, the redesign of which?
What is it, Abe Lando? Is that the...
Abe Lando.
Oh, behind the substation?
Yeah, behind the substation. Yeah, just, it needs a little something.
Now, we're even working on the one up at Our Lady of Lord also.
Good.
That's what the downtown, yeah.
So, you know, that just makes, excuse me, but that just makes me think of the master plan also, so that when we do reach out to stakeholders of the Downtown Alliance, you know, has to weigh in on that, and that would be helpful in our master plan. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes, Mr. Sayers, I know on one point, we spoke about the area by the, by the battery building behind O'Hara Electric as a potential municipal parking.
Yes, we, we are looking at that, but my understanding is that the person who owns the property may not want to do that.
Okay.
We've heard that be...
So is it out, out of the question?
No, we're still talking, but I'm not so sure that's going to be a, a positive out, you know, outcome.
And, Council President, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
And also, Mr. Sayers, the, the definition of how many parking spaces are going to be available in the battery, you know, at the Edison Lots? Is it about 100 open to the public?
You know, I'm not sure, Councilman.
There are, there are 100 spaces available for the public.
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact number, but actually, when I went by there today, they had...
I think it's just something, and thank you, Council President. I think it's just something that we need to get out to the general public, that there will be parking available in the parking lot.
Of course.
It seems like they got their generator in. We went by there today, and the lights were all on and everything, which looked like it was opened up, so.
Thank you.
I, I'll double check on that this week.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Sayers.
Just, can we adjourn as the council, since we're not coming back?
Yes, and then, exactly.
Okay, so we are going to say goodnight for this evening, and...
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
So moved.
Second.
Now we'll say goodnight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
Plenty to do. Thank you.
Night west hours.
Good night, west hours.